We'll go ahead and get started, call the meeting, not really to order, but we're here. And at this time, Dr. Nolte and Ms. Gardner have got some information for us and we'll start our work session.
Members of the board, I wanted to just take a moment and introduce School Efficiency Consultants. Those of you who've been on the Finance Committee in the past may remember them. We've worked with them beginning back in 2012 as they came and did some training with our Finance Office in ABC Transfer Savings. That's where you can legally transfer teachers and other personnel between fund sources, and that was very beneficial for us. We did that about six years ago. Unfortunately, the state doesn't allow much of that anymore and is even taking away some more next year when it comes to AIG. And anyway, we've worked with them for quite some time. We're very impressed with them. They've helped us in the past. You may also remember in a joint meeting with the Commissioners in this room a little over a year ago, last April, we were talking about a number of things. You all were with the Board of Commissioners, and they had mentioned SEC and was impressed with them, and we were talking about finances, and they suggested maybe that we'd get back with them. And we took them up on that offer. And in May, last May, we contacted SEC and talked to them a little bit more about our financial situation. And then we entered into a contract with them last September to specifically talk about salaries. As we began to look at all of our financial situations, we just realized that one of our biggest issues was the fact that we had literally hundreds of employees who had been frozen on a salary scale, some of them for 13 years. And so we entered into a contract with them. We've been working with them quite some time now. They have visited with us and we've sent them information. They've sent information back to us. And not very long ago, just a week or so ago, we received a final report, and Angie and I have been working on some recommendations based upon the report, but we want to share the study with you first. Tonight from SEC, or this evening from SEC, we're fortunate to have Ricky Lopes. We worked actually with three different individuals, but he is a highly skilled and highly trained individual. You answer that if it's a principle. I always try to answer those since there's just one of me right now. Make sure there's not a fire alarm or something going off. He has more than 30 years of experience in school administration. He retired from Cumberland County Schools in 2015 as their Associate Superintendent for Business Operations. And if you can imagine with our budget how complicated and sophisticated that would be in a system as large as Cumberland County Schools. He's been recognized, has lots of awards. The one that was most impressive to us was he was the recipient of the Award for Financial Achievement in Reporting, making sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. And he received that recognition from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. So really a peer review, other people who worked in school finance. So Ricky, thank you for being here on behalf of SEC. We're going to turn it over to you and let you go through that lengthy report.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Good evening, Board members. At SEC, we appreciate the opportunity to work with school systems, and we appreciate y'all giving us the contract to come in and work with Dr. Nolte and Angie on this salary study. And we're not going to obviously read every page, but we are going to go through it in a chronological order, and I'll highlight some of the key issues on each page. If we'll go ahead and start on page two on the introduction, basically what it's saying is that the cost, what we're getting across here is that the cost of losing an employee is very high because you've got to train a new person. And once you train them, if they leave after two or three years, you just have a constant training schedule, getting them ready for the workplace, but you're not able to retain them. And over the next couple pages here, you'll see where we give a little history of the state's salaries. And back in 2008, when the Great Recession hit, the state stopped giving raises to non-certified employees. Teachers, to some extent, have received raises, and even that is, some of the teachers have not received much of an increase, depending on where they are on the scale, but the non-certified employees have not received a continuous salary increase till this past year. They received one-time bonuses and so forth, but this past year, they received an across-the-board $1,000 a year, $83 a month. So since 2008, that was really their only increase, but hospitalization insurance went up. Their take-home pay may have actually been less than what it was before they got the raise. So anyway, we came in and looked at various job categories, and we'll go through this in more detail. We go to page four. I think it helps to know why school systems are in the situation they are. It's not just Haywood County. The situation that you're in is typical across the state. We've only had one district that we worked with that was able to give raises to employees with local money during the recession. So they were able to give steps in some of those years. Every other district we've worked with has had the frozen salary scale, just like you. So don't feel like it's just Haywood County that's in this situation. But historically, based on the way the Constitution is written, the state constitution, states responsible for instructional expenses. If you look at how much the local school systems have paid out of their local budget for instructional expenses, the most recent number is $2.7 billion of local expenditures going to instructional expenses. And so if the state was picking up that $2.7 billion, that's more money you would have locally to be able to take care of some of the non-instructional areas. And so there, it used to be a gray area. Now it's not even gray. I mean, it's just the state pays for what they want to pay, and this has been going on for years. This isn't something that happened recently. And so now there's really not a line that says, here's what the state pays for, here's what the locals pay for. And I'll give you one quick example. There used to be a separate allotment for office personnel, a separate allotment for custodians, and you were guaranteed a teacher assistant for every K-3 classroom teacher. And you were guaranteed a sub for every approved absence for a teacher. So every one of those had its own funding source, and so every one of those was guaranteed. Now, all of those are in one allotment, and it's a dollar amount. And just speaking from Cumberland's standpoint, we can pay for our custodians out of that allotment. Every one of our subs, every one of our office personnel comes out of local money because that allotment's only big enough to cover our custodians. Whereas typically, we have three separate allotments. Now, the teacher assistants still have their allotment, but you don't get one for every K-3 teacher. So this, let's just give you a perspective as to what's happened over the last 20, 25 years with allotments, and so why school systems are having trouble giving raises to employees, because they're having to use the money, obviously, to put it right back in the classroom, but they're not able to have the money to reward their existing employees. Back in 1970, 52.5% of the state budget went to K-12 education. Now it's less than 38%. And so if you use that same percentage now, you'd have billions more dollars going into education. That just gives you a background to let you know what, it's not a Haywood issue, it's a statewide issue, but I just want to bring that to your attention. If we go to page five, this is just a very quick summary of our recommendations. It's not detailed. We're going to go over the detail in just a second. If you look at page five, what we recommend for you is a 30-step scale with an experience factor determining those 30 steps. And so there would be an incremental increase between each of those steps. And what's happened now is because there has not been a raise in 10 or 12 years, you could have an employee that starts tomorrow that's making the same thing as the employee, or more, if you give them credit for their outside experience, making at least as much or more than the person that's been here since 2008 or earlier. And so what we're trying to do is rectify that situation. And so our recommendations at the end hopefully will reflect that. If we go to page six, these are the positions that we looked at. Not all of them are non-certified, but for the majority of them were. If you look at page six under the methodology, you'll see the positions that we looked at for you. When we did this study, one of the things we like to talk about is that we customize it for the district. It'd be easy to take your numbers, throw them into a database, let the computer generate a number and say, here's what you ought to be paying, folks. We like to go in and customize it to the point where we're comparing you to people who have like demographics, like situations, and so that we can customize a salary scale. So you'll see, as we get to the end, you'll see that we have tried to customize it for Haywood. Your salary schedule will be different than any other one that we recommend for other districts. Each one's customized. If you go to page seven, the part I want to talk about is at the very end, the districts that we were able to get information from. Unfortunately, we were not able to get as much information as we would have liked from some of your neighboring districts. We were able to get some information, but that was because it was public information. For whatever reason, they weren't as willing to share, so we had to get districts from other parts of the state that we were able to get a full set of information. So you'll see like at the bottom for Transylvania and Henderson, you'll see that it says limited information available, whereas on the others, we were able to get everything that we needed for the positions that we were taking into consideration. So in just a minute, we're going to look at some demographics from some of your neighboring districts. But as far as getting salary information, only if it was public information like principal supplements, teacher supplements, we were able to get that, but specific information on other salaries, we were not able to get. That's the first time, we've done about 15 of these, and that's the first time it's happened where we're not able to get information from districts. Pages eight through 13, or I'm sorry, through 11 is the template that we sent asking districts to fill out to give us information. So it's just a blank, this is a blank copy of what we sent out, just so you'll know what we asked them to fill out. Page 12 just shows you some of the databases that we used to get some of the information. Page 13 is where I want to spend a few minutes. We like to look at the demographics of the district that we're working with and also their cohort districts, to see what the likes and differences are between the districts. So we're going to spend a few minutes looking at your numbers. We're not going to spend time looking at the others individually, but we are going to do a summary of your demographics to theirs. If we spend a few minutes on pages 13 and 14. On page 13, you'll see that it's got your population, and you're about half-urban, half-rural. When you think of urban, you don't think of, you know, the Haywood County, so to speak, but the federal definition of urban, you're about almost half and half, and you'll see how that comes into play in just a few minutes. Your per pupil expenditure, you're right in the middle. There's 115 school systems, you're 57. Okay? So 88, I'm sorry, 87, 41, 24, you're right in the middle, but that's all dollars. That's not just your local dollars, that's all dollars. Let's look at that next number for a second, and I want to explain this one to you, the ability to pay. There's a publication that comes out every year by the North Carolina Public School Forum, and it's been coming out since the early 90s. And they do five tables of information for every county in the state on how they fund education. They don't differ, they don't pick out the city systems because they have a supplemental tax, so they look at the 100 districts. And they look at the ability of a district, its resources to be able to fund education. So some districts have higher income, others have higher property tax, so you'll see all kinds of different things in this study. Well, each year, about January, it comes out and it ranks 100 systems for each of those five tables. So that being said, what this says is that out of the 100 counties, Haywood County is 25th in its ability to have resources for the schools. There's only 24 other districts that have more resources than Haywood County, okay, on a per-student basis. Well, if you look at the effort, the effort is 65th. What you want that number to be theoretically is 25 or lower. That would show that the ability and the effort are the same. This is typical for this part of the state, okay, to have that kind of a spread, so it's not unique to Haywood, but I just wanted you to explain what those numbers mean, okay? If we keep looking down at the worker information, your employment rate is actually pretty good, 4.6%. If we look at the income, the number that is striking is your poverty level. We're going to see in just a minute that your poverty level is higher than most of your neighboring districts and also the other districts that we looked at. So you're at 17.2%, so that's really the factor that's going to differentiate you from some of your neighboring, some of your neighboring districts. I did leave, if we'll go back to, one thing I did leave off on page seven. Page seven lists the districts that we actually looked at for your study, and I should have spent a minute with that so you can see the districts. You'll see there's a letter besides, yes, sir?
Can we go back to the expenditures just for one second, just so I can clarify it in my mind? So you're saying that we're ranked 25th in the ability to pay, but we're actually paying at the 65th percentile? And now is that from the district standpoint, or is that from the money we're getting from the county, or how does that?
That's just, that's a good question. That's just your local resources. So what it's saying is, there's a table, they have all these revenues that counties are able to generate, and it says, here's what Haywood is able to generate based on certain factors. So when you rank them out of 100 counties, they are the 25th in the ability to raise money.
Okay.
Whatever one of those columns are. So overall, out of 100, they're 25th, which is pretty good. So then they say, okay, well, here's how much they can raise, how much are they giving to the schools? Okay? And so they fall behind on that because they're 65th out of 100 in what they're giving you versus what they're able to-
So simplifying that, we're missing out on some money out there. In other words-
Yes.
That we could be getting in our district to be using-
And that's the purpose of that little study, is just to show, there's a few districts that are considered the haves, and then there's the have-nots. You're not considered one of those. But typically what the study is showing is that the gap between the have and the have-nots is getting wider, not closer.
Okay.
When Leandro, the Leandro lawsuit came about and they started giving out low wealth money, the thought was that the gap would get smaller, but what happened was they watered down the formula. And so what's happened now is that the wealthier districts are getting wealthier and the poorer districts are getting poorer. And so every year, the gap gets bigger and bigger. So that's the intent of the study, but these are the numbers they use to justify that conclusion.
Thank you.
If we look on page 14, this is another factor that we're going to look at in more detail in just a minute. You'll see that your average weekly wages are roughly less than $700 a week, and we're going to see how that comes into play in just a minute compared to other districts. So if we'll go all the way to page, page 29, because between 15 and 28, the, those are, that's the information on the other districts. There are a couple of typos or misinformation, and I'll just mention those to you, and if you want to change them in your book, you can. On page 15 for Buncombe, on the per pupil expenditure, the wrong number got picked up. It should be $8,579. It doesn't change the ranking, it just changes the number. But on page 15, it should be $8,579 on per pupil expenditure. And Transylvania's was also wrong. On page 25, it should be $9,855.16. It's $9,855.16. It was off one column, so our person picked up the wrong number there. Doesn't change any of the rankings, it just changes the number. So if we go to page 29, now that we have a little bit of background as to where Haywood fits individually, how do they compare to the districts that we looked at for salary purposes? So if we look at some of this information, you look at the estimated population growth, very little growth. For all intents and purposes, you're projected to have no growth in Haywood County, and either is Transylvania, that's one of your neighboring districts. But one of the districts that was in your cohort, Brunswick County, they're having significant growth. But you're at the tail end, you're at the low end of growth. So what that's implying is that you're going to have a decline in K-12 population as time goes on. Let's go a couple places down here where it says population by age. Not only do you have a stagnant or decline in population, you also have a low percentage of your population that is 0 to 19 years old. You can see that Orange County, which is the Chapel Hill area, they have about 27% of their population that's 0 to 19 years old. You're right at 20.6, which is barely above Transylvania's 19.6. You've got two factors against you for having a growing population. Your numbers are probably going to start, if they haven't already, I think they've come down some already, but they're probably going to stay stagnant, may decline just a little bit, but you're not going to see a big increase. Return the page, go to page 30. Let's go all the way down to education. You can see that we have the population that has at least a high school education, you're right in the middle. Okay? So not good, bad, I mean, it's just, it's right there in the middle. Let's look at the bachelor's degree. You look at the bachelor's degree, Granville has the lowest percentage at 17.6, yours is at 23.9. So you're not, you know, you're not the lowest, but you're on the low tier. And it's a little bit unfair to put Orange in there because Orange is where UNC is at. So they're, obviously with the hospital and the university there, they're going to have a lot of bachelor's degrees. So that's kind of an outlier. I wouldn't pay a lot of attention to that number, but I would compare the, your number to, say, Granville's. And you can look at the other districts' numbers on their individual information. Here's the, the next number is the one that also is a big issue. The population with income below the poverty level, of all the districts that we looked at, you had the highest level of poverty. Okay? So that puts you in a little bit different situation. We can't look at, I'll just use Buncombe as an example because they're the biggest district around you. We can't say this is what Buncombe's paying and come in here and say you ought to pay what Buncombe's paying. It'd be wasting your time, I'd be wasting my time, because you don't have the resources to pay what Buncombe's paying. Okay? So when we look at the poverty level, that kind of indicates, yeah, we don't, we're not going to have those kind of resources. So that's why we have to customize our report, so that we try to come up with something that you may be able to pay, but not necessarily try to put you at the highest level that some of these other districts are paying. Let's turn the page over to page 31. Unemployment, once again, unemployment looks pretty good. So you have, you have people working, they're just not working at high-paying jobs. Okay? We have some districts that have a high unemployment rate and have, don't have high-paying jobs, so it could be worse. So unemployment is, rate seems to be okay, you just don't have a lot of high-paying jobs in the county. You can see the next thing there about new job creation, there were very new jobs created in the first quarter of '17. Some of the information's a year old because it takes a year for the government to publish the information, but you can see there wasn't a lot of job creation a year ago. The next one is where I want to spend a couple minutes on also, the employments by, employment and wages by industry. If we look at all industries, you can see that Transylvania has the lowest weekly income, 637. You're right next to them, it's 667. Once again, Orange is an anomaly because they're at the high end, but you're still, most of the districts are in the 700s or low 800s. But you can see, there's going to be a trend here where you're at the low end of the income level. Government, you're the lowest, it's 699. Private industry, you're the lowest, 661. Educational services, you're the lowest. I don't mean to depress you, it's just, I'm just stating what the facts are showing. But, so you, once again, your wages are not real high in Haywood.
It's too late, you didn't depress me.
Sorry. If we look at pages 32 and 33, it just has some narrative about what some of the personnel policies are in the districts that we looked at. Do they pay a supplement to their non-certified employees? Do they give credit for outside experience? So this was some of the information we were able to get from the other, from the other districts. Now let's go to the salary stuff, okay? All that was background information to get you to page 34, where we actually look at salary information. So not only did we compare you to other school systems, we compared you to the marketplace because you have competition, not just from school systems, your immediate competition are your employers in this area, not necessarily just Haywood County, but in the outlying areas also. So what we did was we looked at certain positions, compared those to your government, the Haywood County government, and also the metro areas. In your case, we used two metro areas. So I'm not going to go through all these, I know you're looking at this cold, but I'll just pick a couple examples. If you look at, say, an IT technician, which is about halfway down the page, your range here is from 31,000 to 36,000. You look at the county government, it's from 32,000 to 50,000. You look at, you look at your competition in your metro area, the midpoint is 37,000 or roughly 42,000. So you're at the low end of the range. But once again, when salaries have been frozen for 10 years, you're going to fall behind. When I was in the business, we used to pay a little bit more than county and city government, for whatever reason. But over the last 10 years, they've been able to give, I can't speak specifically to Haywood, but generally, cities and counties were not impacted as heavily as school systems because they're not as dependent on state money. Okay? They can raise their own resources through property taxes. So they were able to give, even if there were small raises, they were able to give step increases to their employees. School systems weren't. So over that 10-year period, their salaries have gone higher in the school system employees. And once again, I don't know how it is here, but in Cumberland, we were losing people to other governmental agencies for that reason. You may have the same, you have the same issue here. Let's go down to the bottom of the page, your trade areas, carpenters, painters, plumbers, HVAC, electrician and bus drivers. You can see, once again, some of those are significantly below what the metro area is paying. So if you have somebody that's a licensed plumber or a licensed HVAC person, and somebody, they can make a whole lot more on the outside than they can working for the schools. We used to be able to say that we can offer you benefits, and you need to take that into consideration. Well, now, you know, the health insurance is not as good as it used to be, and the retirement, we don't, who knows what's going to happen with that, because you're talking about changing some of the provisions with that.
That was my question I was going to ask, is about the benefits. So this is just raw salary-
Raw salary.
Okay, so none of the benefits or anything extra?
No. Just the salary. If we go to the next page, 35, this is when we start looking at your comparison to other school districts. So if you go back to page seven and kind of put your finger on page seven, so that you can see what the, what these letters represent. A is Buncombe, B is Franklin, C is Granville, D is Orange, E is Brunswick, and F, I mean, the last two are Transylvania and Henderson. This is the information for those particular districts. So if we look at the teacher supplement, once again, Orange County is going to be an outlier. You can't really consider theirs, that they're paying 18% supplement. Buncombe's paying up to 16% at the high end. I can't come in here and tell you that's what you need to be, you know, working towards. So, but even when you look at some of the others, your, some of your neighboring districts, they're paying a higher supplement than what you're paying. And so what we like to see, if you look at the very, we don't have the information on this one, but statewide, the average for teacher supplements is around, is over $4,000. That's statewide. If you take out Chapel Hill City, Charlotte Meck, and Wake, because they pay the highest supplement, and Charlotte Meck and Wake obviously have a huge number of employees, they distort the average, okay? There's 112 other systems besides those three. If you take those three out, the state average for supplements is closer to 3,000. Okay? And so you're at about 2,500. What we recommend for those districts that don't have the resources that some of the other ones do is that you strive to get closer to the 3,000, get you closer to the state average. We can't come in here and ask you to, you know, try to pay a 16 or 18% supplement, that just wouldn't be, wouldn't be reasonable. If we go to the, and I'm not going to read each one of these, but on page 36, your administrative salaries are low for Assistant Superintendent. You go to page 37, your Finance Officer's salary is low. There's a trend here. If you look at page 38, your Director's salaries are low. One thing that we like, and I'll just talk about administrative salaries, because sometimes that's, people don't like to talk about those, but it is an issue. The state budget only pays at less than 1%, less than 1% of the state budget goes to central office salaries. It's getting cut every year. They're going to cut another, I forget, is it 6 million or 4 million? Anyway, out of the statewide budget for admin again next year, but less than 1% of the state budget goes to central office. So what that's doing is putting pressure on the local units to have to come up with more money to pay their salaries because the state's not giving you enough money. Okay? So that being said, when we work with central office salary scales, we like to see a piggy- So, that being said, when we work with central office salary scales, we like to see a piggyback effect from the principal level, or really the teacher to the principal, you know, the principal up to the different levels of administration, whether it be coordinator, specialist, director, through executive director and associate superintendent. I'll just give you a quick example. In Cumberland, our executive directors were paid on a, one of the principal levels. Not necessarily the highest one, but one of the principal levels. That way, there's an incentive for a principal to advance if they want to in, in the central office, but there was a rhyme or reason to it. A director would have been a lower level than that, and a coordinator, but there, but you can, anybody can look at the scale and they know if they come to the central office, here's what it's going to pay. Here's what I'm making now, is it worth my while to come to the central office? And it does two things. It, it guarantees, it tells them how much they're going to make, but it also prevents somebody taking a, a less, a job with less responsibility and being guaranteed their salary when they come to the central office. Typically, what we find is, somebody from the school comes to the central office, they get the same salary. If they're a high school principal and you bring them in at a low central office position, they have less responsibility, but they're going to be making way up here, the other people that are already here are going to be making a lot lower. Okay? So we like to see a, a scale that's hierarchical in nature, but there's a rhyme or reason as to why they're making what they're making, knowing that the principals obviously are, are the scale that we're going to work off of. If we go to page thirty-nine, your clerical salaries, once again, school-based, are low. When we say they're low, the beginning salaries in and of themselves may not be as bad, but it's because of the compression that's going to cause the salaries to, to spread out. The range is not very high, not very wide right now. But when you put in a thirty-step scale, it'll take care of some of these inequities. In some cases, even though we say the salaries are low, it's the, it's after the beginning salary that they're low because nobody's making, you know, at the high end of the range. They've been frozen for ten, twelve years. I'm not going to go through all these, those were just examples. If we go all the way to page forty-seven. Forty-seven lists each of the positions that we were looking at and gives, it gives you a summary of our observations or, or what we should be considered for the, for the future. And so, once again, we've, you know, we've talked about some of these already, the teacher supplements. But, for each of the positions that are listed, we give a recommendation for what we think you ought to, ought to consider as resources become available. So the, one of the areas that we also see that are, from unit to unit, are with transportation mechanics. Now that the bus is or diesel, it's, it's easy for somebody who's trained in diesel, diesel mechanic to get a job with another company, and almost double their salary, really. You know, we've seen situations where they're able, they get trained here, they get some experience, but then they're able to go work somewhere else, which is good for them, but it's not good for the school system. And so, that, you'll see down here that fleet mechanics is one of the ones that's below the cohort. Almost everywhere we've been, that's been a, that's been an issue. But the state's not giving us more money to pay the salaries we need to pay. So once again, that becomes a local burden, not a, not a state burden. I know I talk fast, I apologize for that, but I didn't, you haven't had a chance to look at this yet, you're catching it cold. So I just want to give you a summary. Dr. Nolte and Angie have been through this with us, and so they, they might have some information I haven't brought up, I'm not sure. But, this was just a quick summary of the, of the study, and of course, answer any questions that, that you may have.
When you mentioned, when you mentioned the poverty level in Haywood County, it being seventeen, which is the highest among the cohorts, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a, not a student population number, that's general population number.
Yes.
Haywood County.
Yeah, that, that's a federal, that's a...
That's a federal definition.
Yes, uh-huh.
Not on a student, but on a population.
Right.
Okay. Dr. Nolte?
Yeah, Mr. Francis, Chairman Francis, the number that you all, and most of us, are familiar with looking at is the free reduced lunch rate.
Yeah.
And that is a federal formula that takes the po- poverty rate and uses a formula to create a free and reduced lunch rate. So that's just a number that's calculated from the poverty rate. But the poverty rate is different, the free and reduced lunch rate or amount of money is more income than the poverty rate, and it is for the whole county rather than just for our students.
Going back to the other question that Mr. Francis here brought up about the twenty-fifth ranking and the sixty-fifth, does that reflect that maybe the, the resources in this county are being spent in other departments? Or, or is it just being squirreled away, or do you know?
It's hard to say, because the, the, one of the things that the western counties have that they don't have in the east, you have higher property tax values. The property tax values don't necessarily correlate to income. And so on that chart, there's a high value placed on property tax values, because that's where the money's generated for the county to run its government. So, in and of itself, the numbers don't necessarily mean anything other than what we've said tonight. The effort is not meeting the ability. Somebody would have to go in and dig through the county numbers to figure out if there's a, a way for them to do more for the, you know, for the schools. Is the tax rate, you know, where it needs to be? Or is the money going to other departments? There's all kinds of things that would need to be considered. But, just looking at the raw numbers, there's room for discussion, let's put it that way.
Okay. Well, I think it brings up an important issue. I mean, I, I know every entity that's funded to the county gets local money, or is asking for money. I don't, I wouldn't, I'm not in this at that position either. But it looks like we might want to visit that as a starting point for discussion to help us achieve some of the disparity that we've been pointed out in this report, in my mind.
We found, and when we visit school systems, we have, you're not going to be any different. You have very conscientious, hard-working employees who've been here for years, and even though they're making less money, they could make more somewhere else, they stay. And so, it, it's not like we're recommending, you know, these huge increases. It's just, what is a fair wage for a fair day's work?
Correct.
For the responsibilities that they have. So I think, you know, usually people will listen to that if they see that their wages are lower than what they should be.
And I, I know that we hadn't gone through the whole study yet, but, you know, and maybe you, you'll address it at some point in time. But is there a way to, instead of just jumping into these salaries or increases or trying to get us up to where we need to be, is there maybe a little more of a method of doing a little bit now, a little bit next year, and gradually getting up to where we need to be over time?
Thank you for that, yeah. From an implementation standpoint, it's been done different ways. One district was able to, to fund it in their, their next budget cycle for eighteen, nineteen. Other districts are doing it over a three-year period. Others are picking certain categories, funding those first, and they're going to do the other categories later. One district we've worked with for three years, each year, they've done a different group of employees, and then the county has worked with them to fund those groups each of those three years. So we've seen it...
Different ways, just however...
Yes, and so, it's really, it's really going to depend on the resources that are available to implement it. Because you'll be able to estimate how much it's going to cost, but then, how difficult is it going to be to get those resources to, to actually implement the, the scale?
Thank you.
Sure appreciate your time and presentation tonight. It's very informative, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for contracting with us. And, of course, if y'all have any questions, Dr. Nolte or Angie can get in touch with me quickly. But thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. Unfortunately, I won't have to step away, I've got another engagement I've got to get to. Are these, do we need to leave these here because of the financial, so these we can take with us and look at and study?
That's your study. You're going to miss the good part. You'll have to come see us. We'll do a makeup session. But I understand obligations. I went to Tuscula's ROTC right before I got here. So, it is that time of year when we have many obligations. Your last question was a great question. We spent some time talking, not only with Ricky, but with Hank and some other people with SEC about how to tackle this problem. The one thing that is clear is that our biggest financial problem, at least from a long-term sustainability view, is the fact that a lot of our employees, around three hundred or so, a little less than three hundred, have essentially been frozen on their pay scales, or some of them for up to thirteen years. And some of them, if we, they've been with us six years, then they've been frozen for six years. And so, we have spent a lot of time, primarily myself and Angie, but we also talked with Todd about transportation. We talked with Allison about school food service. We've looked at lots of scales. We, we considered a lot of factors. Some employee groups, as you look through the study, are fairly close to market. And so, we need to keep that in mind. Other employee groups are way away from market. And so, what I'm bringing to you, and of course, this is a work session, so you wouldn't have any action, but what I'm bringing to you is a recommendation that we would like for you all to consider at a, a school board meeting sometime in the, in the future, hopefully before next school year starts, about how we address this problem. And, to answer the question about how you go about it, there are lots of ways to address this problem. We think the first thing is just, and we, and SEC agreed with this when we talked to them, the first thing is just to get everyone on a step. The problem cannot be fixed if we continue to have large groups of people who are all paid the same amount, and some of them have worked two years, one or two years, and others have worked ten or twelve or thirteen. So here's our recommendation, and we have lots of supporting evidence. So just stop me along the way. Angie is going to drive the PowerPoint and correct me when I make mistakes, okay? So, here, here we go. This is the, the number of salaried non-certified employees. Now, these are folks who get the same paycheck every month, but they don't have a teaching license. We're talking about teacher assistants, clerical people, certainly some of the people, custodians, maintenance, some of the transportation employees, mechanics, and some of those people. That is the biggest employee group, that's why we put it on top. That's the biggest group of, of like employees. There's some subgroups that we'll also look at. There are just over two hundred and seventy of those people, and we have part-time positions. You know, we'll have someone who's three days a week, and someone who's two days a week, or they work less than twenty hours a week. So that's where you get the point five-seven when you add them all up. We have sixty-one on step one and two, a little over sixty-one, steps two through five. Fifty-nine, almost sixty of those, steps six through ten. And you can see that's where a lot of people are because they've been frozen there, even though they may have been with us a really long time. Yes?
And you're saying states, is that years of service?
Years of service, yes, sir.
On the state?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Years of service. And that's a great question. Years of service. And then when we get to sixteen, twenty, twenty to twenty-five, and over twenty-six, we have very few people there because they've not moved. You know, they've just not moved. So, that's the number of that big group. Any other questions about that slide? I know this will take some time, but it really is, this, this really is our, our, I think, biggest issue in terms of finance, right now. So if we look at that group, and we'll give you a lot of background information, and we have some twenty, twenty-seven pay scales that have been developed. Angie's probably created fifty, because she brought a lot of them to me, and I'm like, that's Cadillac, we can't pay for that. Can you bring me like, closer to my vehicle? You know, not quite a Cadillac, but would be appropriate to start with. So if we look at that big group, the projected initial increase for the salaried non-certified employees would be a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. About a little over thirteen thousand in FICA, about thirty-one thousand in retirement. And, we are very confident, and we'll tell you the sources of this and show you scales and all kinds of stuff before we're finished. We think we can fix that in a respectable way, certainly not the best way, with about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which we have. And we feel pretty confident in being able to do that. So that's a big group. So let's look at the next slide, some of the examples of the biggest groups and what the scales look like. So if you'll excuse me, I have notes here and looking at similar thing, I'm looking down. This is ten-month teacher assistance. You'll notice at the top that they're really ninety-seven point seven-five employees instead of one hundred percent. They work a little less than eight hours a day, seven and a half hours a day. They, they have a grade fifty-six. The minimum for that pay grade is nineteen hundred dollars, a little over, and the maximum is a little over three thousand. So you can look at the scale, and the, the, the first column is the step or the years' experience. The second column is the current pay, and you can look down through there and see, it's the same for thirteen years. And you already know this, but I'm just repeating it, I'm being intentionally redundant because I think it's that important. So someone who has thirteen years' experience makes thirty dollars more a month than someone who has zero or no year, no years' experience. And someone with three years' experience makes the same as someone who's been with us ten or twelve years. So what we would propose is the green column, or the column to the right of current. And the initial increase for those steps, the first couple of steps would be the same because that's where people are coming in. And then you can see amounts going up through thirty-two years. I will tell you that even though SEC recommends a thirty-step pay scale, it's not financially feasible for Haywood County schools at this time because we have people with thirty years, and we've been frozen for thirteen. And if we fix the scales, that's going to push some of those people at the end to a forty-third line, and we'll show you a few of those in here. If we pushed all of that into thirty lines, the number amount for each year would be so big that you would still have people at the bottom of the years' experience scale making more than at the top. So, yes?
Just to clarify, because you and I have looked at all these scales, most of our scales go to a step forty-three. I couldn't make this fit on the screen. I, I think I've made most, I've stopped at thirty-two, but just so y'all will kind of have for reference, and I've got some sample, paper samples if you need to see them. Our scales don't stop at thirty-two, they go to, in most cases, forty-three, best cases are forty-one.
And that's why I was telling you that, that, we can't make them fit in thirty, it's just not financially. And we're going to show you several, but if you want to see one, we'll pull it out and read it to you and show it to you, and that kind of stuff. So the, the proposed initial increase, you see, you'll see that that increase is really small, first thirteen to, thirteen to fifteen years. In fixing these, if those were all fifty dollars or one hundred dollars, by the time we got down to someone with thirty years' experience, we wouldn't be able to pay them because all that money would have accumulated. So we had to take an amount of money between step zero and step thirteen and make those steps, because if you made them bigger, you wouldn't be able to pay the person at twenty years' experience. Just, it's impossible unless you're a very wealthy school system with millions and millions of dollars lying around. So the initial monthly increase mirrors that. So the initial monthly increase mirrors that. And then, what we would propose to do on all of these, if we got your approval at a upcoming school board meeting, and I'll go faster and explain less as I show you things going forward. What we would propose to do is to put people, this coming year, if you approved it, to put people on the correct pay step year, and give them the initial increase. That's what we would do this first year. And we'll show you the big numbers in just a minute for everything, for everyone. And then after that, the person would receive the monthly increases from step to step, because we would move them up. Or, if the state provided more for that step, we would give them the state amount. We would give them the greater of what the state does, and in a year when the state doesn't do anything, we would provide the amount in that right column. And you have to do something like that, because if you don't provide anything during the year that the state doesn't do anything, then you quickly go back to, if you don't provide anything during the year, that the state doesn't provide an increase for that employee group, then you quickly go back to a period of time where people are frozen for years. And you have people coming in who make as much as people who've been with you a long time. So I spent more time on that one, probably than on any of the others, except one. There's one I want to spend more time on.
Just out of curiosity, how many are there that the state rate would be?
Well, it varies, it really varies from year to year. Some years, the state will give $1,000 to everyone, and if that is more than the increase, then we would give people that amount. And if it wasn't, then we'd make sure that they got our amount, or at least get what the state, what the state does. But the state is very unpredictable. They have gone for periods of time, I can remember when I first started working a long time ago, the state was frozen for nine years, when Governor Hunt was early in his governorship. And I was fortunate enough to be at UNC Charlotte the first year the state came out of that. And boy, was that not nice. So the state's very unpredictable, so we can't really predict what they're going to do in terms of giving increases from year to year. The pattern is, Mr. Henson, it's a great question, is they almost always do something for teachers, and assistant principals and principals, not always, but almost always. And then, in any given year, they either give less or nothing to people who do not have a teaching certificate, and people who are tied to that scale, which for us is 10 or 11 people in our office. They're not tied to the assistant principal scale, or the principal scale. And I'll show you all those in just a moment. So any other questions about that, that particular explanation? I'll try to explain less as we go and look at other groups. Okay. So the next one is 12-month custodians, that's another very large employee group. They're typically paid at a pay grade 51, even though there are subgroups and other pay scales. Currently, you can see the steps, these are our employee steps. We have a couple years at $1,900, almost $2,000, and then we go from step two to step 13 at 2018. And so, it's the same picture over and over and over, that's why we're not going to show you all of them unless you want to look at them. And the same thing has happened there, clerical, mechanics, technicians, central office directors, the same thing has happened. They went into the job and they sat there for a long time. Our proposal is in the green column, to put those steps at those numbers, and then the initial increase, that first year, which hopefully would be next year if you all approved it. So what we would do, and we would do this with every pay scale, every pay scale sheet, and every group of employees that's impacted, we would put them on the right step, the correct step, which is the green column, and then we would give them the initial increase. And then thereafter, we would do the step increase in the far right column, if the state did nothing for this employee group. And if the state did that or more, they would get the state.
So that's 12-month, that's all 12-month non-certified, or?
That's 12-month custodians.
Just custodians.
This is custodians. This sheet is custodians.
Just custodians, okay.
We have 27 sheets. We have a couple copies of them, and we'll, if there's one that you're really interested in, we'll pull it out and read it to you, hand it to you, let you look at it. There are just that many pay categories. So there's that one. The, going to the next sheet, and we'll take as long as we need here to make sure you all have all the information you need. This is the projected initial increase for hourly non-certified employees. Now, they're just like the first group in that they don't have a teaching license of some sort, but they don't receive the same check every month. They receive pay for the number of hours they have worked. These are primarily bus drivers and child nutrition workers. 73 school bus drivers, 72 child nutrition workers. We are very confident that we can put those folks on a acceptable, not best step, but on a better, we can put them on a step, first of all, which will be a lot better for them if they've worked six years instead of no years, or 13 or 14 or 15 years instead of one or two. The bus drivers, that, we think that'll cost us a little over $23,000. And this is a plan, it might change if three of our experienced bus drivers left, and we had younger ones. Or it might go up if we hired a bus driver that worked somewhere else, and they had a lot of experience, and we granted them that experience. And then we feel like we can put the child nutrition hourly employees on a step with an increase for 31.6. Well, I've got, on the next page is bus, and then, we can... Yeah, pass them around. We have lots of them. There you go. You'll see that with a couple exceptions, they really all look very, very similar. We have a couple scales, give you a little bit of info while you're looking. We have a couple of scales where there's like one person, and there's literally one person in that job. You know, it's the maintenance director, or it's the child nutrition director, or it's a, it's a WIOA, WIOA grant employee.
And this is nutrition.
This really is a work session now. This is what they look like for you people in TV land, is what it looks like. And this is mammoth. You know, I feel real good about what we're proposing to you, but this has taken a lot of analysis and a lot of time. Looked like you have a question. Okay.
35 if I want, take one pastor.
Eight. Seven and a half.
Different position. Look at the top, it says 57, 51.
How about this, how about I go through this presentation, and then you all can just quiz us and say, what's this one? You can read the top of it, and then we'll tell you. All right? Because we have a couple other topics, and I want to make sure we do this one really well, even if we have to do the other ones quicker or later. So the next, next sheet in the PowerPoint is hourly bus drivers, okay? Bus drivers. Another very large group of non-salaried employees, non-salaried employees. And so, currently, you can see, it's happened to them too. Step zero, and one are the same, and then you have step two through 10 is the same, and then step 11 is just a little bit higher. And you will remember that we did get some state money, and Mr. Trantham brought to you some pay for bus drivers, so that, this actually looks a little better than it did not too long ago. So, the proposed, the proposed steps would have an hourly increase, you can see the hourly increase in the next to the last column on the right, for those years of experience, and then the hourly rate on that scale. And we would want to do with these hard-working people who do, all these folks do a great job for us, the same thing that we would do with everyone else. We would put them on a step, some of them have been frozen. And then we, that first year, we, in addition to putting them on the step, we would give them the hourly rate increase.
Just out of curiosity, what is our average bus driver age? Is it 10 years, 20 years?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Trantham.
That has got a lot younger in the last few years. We have had, of course, as older drivers have retired, have had some younger drivers. So we have a ton of drivers that are in that zero and one category. And that category is growing, maybe more than we've ever had before, but that is not unusual. The state just released a salary study of school bus drivers across the state, and we're really in line with what you see in a lot of places in this state, where older drivers are retiring, and as they do, you're finding more and more of your population are in that zero, one, and two years of experience category. I couldn't tell you that right now, but it is, it is an ongoing process. Our attrition is barely able to keep up with the amount of drivers we're able to recruit to replace them. So we're barely able, I may have said that backwards, we're barely able to recruit fast enough to maintain that attrition rate.
Not that, not that high, and when we lose one, we can find one pretty quickly. Pretty good turnover rate. It's certainly not nearly as bad as a bus driver, but tougher, higher than TA. Go ahead.
The most turnovers with bus drivers, then I would go to custodians, then TAs, but TA's way below custodian. They're pretty stable.
I'm trying to drive this spreadsheet, but to answer a question that was asked probably five questions ago, we have 34 bus drivers that are, have zero to, they're on step two, so they're on their third year with us. 34 out of 72.
So that's about 50%.
Sorry.
So just putting them on the scale, at five years, or however long they've been with us. If I can convince you of anything tonight, when the board acts, the thing that we really are, really need to do, to have a succession plan for assistant principals and principals to move to the central office, to have bus drivers who stay with us and don't go to other counties or other jobs, because they're sitting there for years and years at the same thing. You all know about electricians and technical people who've left us, I could give you the list of names, but we've talked about those through the years. Those people leave us, because they're sitting there frozen on the step. So the first way to address this is to get them on a reasonable step. And then, as money becomes available, there are other fixes that we can implore. We can, we can increase the non-certified supplement. But that doesn't do any good if you increase the non-certified supplement by half a percent or a percent, and you have a lump of people all sitting there being paid as if they have no experience, or two years' experience. So, using step two times in the same sentence, step one is really to put people on steps, and then to build pay schedules. And I think, I think these are pretty close. You could argue and go through all 27 of them and argue that this one needs to be 10 cents more, or that one needs to be $5 less. But we've been very frugal. It may not look like it, but we'll continue to explain what we have here, and why it reads the way that it reads. This is a plan that we can afford. I thought I was pretty conservative, I'm usually the one in our office who has ancillary money left at the end of the year that rolls back into the local budget, but I'm not, I'm not nearly as wise with a penny as Angie. And so, together, we have, and with help from departmental people, we have brought you scale, pay scale recommendations that are doable, and gets us started on a long overdue fix. That's the closing argument I wanted to make, and I'm not through presenting the evidence, Your Honor and the jury. That's just a little levity here.
Just, I have another question, and just for, I'm just curious more. So if we had a 20-year employee that decided to drive a bus, they would get the 14, hey, right? That counts, or do they have to be driving a bus for 20 years?
We typically, that is their experience driving a school bus.
Oh, this is just for experience driving a school bus, okay. That's where I was thinking, if you had somebody that decided to pick it up, that they would get the, I'm just wondering if that would be an incentive to get more teachers and stuff?
I think that's, okay, Mr. Henson and I had that conversation, two-day, okay? I think that's, I think that's the second or third thing that you do. I really do. I think that's the second or third thing that you do. We have a number of employees that we have hired since the state stopped giving pay raises to these 270 and 11 folks at the central office, and a few more like WIOA grant folks, and they're, we'll show you those other ones at the, on the last slide, and talk to you about some of those. But we have been hiring people, and the only people who we have consistently given 10 years of experience to are teachers who came to us from another public school system with 10 years of experience. We have not, and you all know, if you've been in finance, or sometimes even in buildings and grounds meetings, you know that we have not always, if we hired an electrician from, fill in the blank, I don't want to use any business names, electrical company, if we hired them, we did not usually give them their years of experience from that electrical company. And so, I think step three or four, after we get them on a pay scale, and we see that we can afford that, and I think you'll see very shortly, in six months to a year, that we can afford that. I think the next step is when we hire people, between now and when we fix that problem, we begin to look at people coming in, and if we hire an employee who was a clerical person who worked at Western Carolina University for six years, a like job, we bring them in and we put them at six years. If we're not sure about it, it's not an automatic, we can see it clearly, state job to state job, then we at least give them one year for two. And then we go back, this may be two or two years out, but then we go back and say, okay, board, it's working, we're not losing as many people, we're giving people the experience that they really have when we bring them in new. I'm talking about the people we hire in the next year. We've looked back in our records... We've looked back in our records and we found, I don't know how many we'll find. We, we found 16, some number, that when, when they came in, they had a legitimate eight years and we gave them zero. We, let's fix those 16. They're good people, they're working, we don't want to lose them. Now, you would not give any time to anyone who didn't have it and couldn't prove it to you. But I, but I really, but that's, that's a tertiary, third level step. Step one is get them on the scale. And, and make sure that in the years that the state does nothing for that employee group, that we do something, do something.
One more bus driver question. Of the bus drivers that you do have, 72, how many of those work inside the school system? Teachers, assistants, custodians?
Half.
Yeah, I, I would say half. I'd have to go back and get, to give you an exact number, but roughly about 50%.
And that's good.
Yeah, because you have about 50% turnover rate on people that aren't.
What did we say the other morning, the primary doubt was, was it 16?
We just looked that up the other day and it's not sticking in my memory. Todd may have that.
I'll have to pull it up.
One more, one more question. And, and we face this. If a maintenance person gets another certification, what are we, what, how are we handling that? I can't remember.
Well, what?
He, he gets nothing?
Well, here's...
In other words, what I'm saying, I mean, you've got... Exactly.
Well, here's, here's, here's the, and you guys know that I just say what I think people need to hear to make decisions. And sometimes it's popular and sometimes it's not. So, I'm going to say it. The, the, Dr. Garrett's contract did not allow her to give anyone a raise. Didn't. If they, if they got a $3 million grant, if they added a certification, if they added a license, there was no administrative authority to do that. And I'm not asking to do that necessarily. But that, that didn't happen very consistently. So, what we had periodically, and you all are very familiar with this, those of you who've been on the board for some time, periodically, she would bring, or a department person would bring to you individuals who they felt like deserved a pay increase because they went from what they believed was a mechanic one to a mechanic two. And sometimes that included additional training or that included a certification of some sort. And what I would propose to you as another one of those steps down the line, especially with our classified folks, is that we simply build some criteria. And it'll take a while, you know, because we're juggling lots of balls at one time now. And everyone gets the non-certified local supplement. But if you add one of these things, we would have to take each job classification and put things on the list that were credible and reasonable, then your local supplement changes a quarter of a percent or half a percent. And the reason I suggest that is, first of all, if you don't do it that way, then this board is going to be required to convene. Mr. Rogers has been there and done that. He's doing this. Right, it's going to have to convene every, every time somebody adds a pesticide licensure, which we need, so we're not paying people outside to do that kind of stuff, or electrical. But what, what I would propose to you in some reasonable amount of time is that we, we work with all the department head people and, and some of our employees and talk to them. And if you work in child nutrition, these are things you might add. Or if you're a mechanic, or if you work as a technician. And we build that upfront and we bring it to you at some point in time down the road, six months or a year down the road. And we have you review that and make appropriate adjustments and approve it. And then, we wouldn't have to come to you and reconvene every time something happens. We would certainly need to tell you about it at every school board meeting. We'd have to say so-and-so added their license, here's a copy of their certificate. I think that's the way you do that. But I do think the base supplement has to be consistent because you will want a lot of employees who work real hard every day who maybe don't have any certificates because their job area doesn't require them. But I think that's the way, and we've had lots of...
Are you looking at, at that as like a step two in the process?
I don't know that we give them a whole nother year of experience, but instead of their local supplement being 2%, it might be two, two and a quarter or two and a half. We would have to determine the supplemental increases based upon licensure or certifications that they earn. So, you would have employee X, their base supplement is this number, like all the other employees. But every time they add one of these, then the supplement is increased a certain amount.
The military actually does a very good job with that, particularly the Navy. They have a formula system that we could look at and it works really well.
Okay, I think I have three more slides. If you would allow me to get through those. And then, we'll answer any questions you have for as long as you have them. And if we don't know the answer, then we'll find it. So, the next slide, I've actually asked Angie to pull up a calculator because I know this is the slide that might bring the most questions. These are the 11 of central office personnel who are allowed to be paid on an admin four schedule. Okay, they're administrator fours. The only one that, that does not have a teaching license is the finance officer. But the state specifically says in law that the finance officer may be paid on this scale and is certified and approved by the state school board. Did you bring your certificate?
I didn't, but I didn't show you my...
No, it's okay. And so, the same thing has happened to these people. And I didn't want to put their names up. It's probably public information and people would request it. I wanted you to see it, okay? I put it in the PowerPoint so I could print it. So, if you look at the person on line one, that one's been frozen 13 years. If you'll go down to line two, that one's not, never been frozen. Came to us from assistant principalships and principalships and teachers. And so, you can see the far right column, the salary differential change is very, very different. And then, you can go down through there and pick people that you know and go, oh, well, that one's been here about seven years. That's why, that's why that number is somewhere between the first two. So, let me explain as best I can the justification for making these recommendations to you. If you look at the top of that slide, the admin four monthly salary is 41 through 75. That's, you know, no years' experience, zero, all the way up to over 30, all right? That's a big wide range. If you will notice, before I do the calculator math here, in the third from the right column, even after they're put on a step and given the step amount that's proportional to the new schedule, the top of the schedule is still hundreds of dollars less than the maximum in that category. So, let's take that top employee and other ones like it. And let's pretend that the state actually gave that person a $50 a month pay raise each year. Pretty minimal pay raise for someone with a master's degree and 25 years of experience, all right? So, 50 times, you see the math Angie's done there, 50 times 12, that's $600 a year that that person would, would have gotten for a year. Make sure this is not a principal. It was not, okay. And let's pretend that they have been frozen for 13 years, times 13. That's more than that person's increase. So, what, what we're suggesting with the scale that we have developed is that this person get less than a $50 pay increase that the state probably should have provided for them over a 13-year period. And you can do the same math on all the rest of them there. The other thing that we're suggesting here is that we really don't have a succession plan for people to move from the central office to, move to the central off, to the central office from an assistant principal's job or from a small school. You will remember last year that you actually authorized us to pay these people as teachers on the teacher's scale if that was more than the current admin four scale. And so, if you'll look at all of the ones with an M at the end of their grade, seven of the 11 are paid as teachers. So, if they're paid as a teacher and we want to recruit someone with the same years of experience to come to the central office and be one of those jobs, support services, the people sitting here, elementary, secondary supervisor, they're, they're not going to come if they're a teacher. They're already making as much as those seven. And they're not going to come as an assistant principal because assistant principals make more. We've told you that before. The assistant principal monthly salary is more. So, what we have based our step increase on is the assistant principal scale that the state did work on, plus one-half percent, which would be the annual amount. And then, we would be able to legitimately have a succession plan that is reasonable. And we could look at any assistant principal or principals at our small schools and say, would you like to come to the central office and be the so-and-so? And they might say yes because they might make a little bit more money. Angie, what have I forgotten on that sheet? Oh, okay. I've got a further explanation of that sheet on the next sheet. And you're ready to go to the next one. They pop up, let me show you how that's different than clerical, all right? And these are current scales. This is a live snapshot of a current employee on the top. Hot blue block there is a current clerical person with 28 years of experience. See the 28 there? And that person has worked with us 28 years and 12 months. You can see on the left side in the middle there, 12 months. This is a real person. They have a clerical pay grade 60 job, which is a higher pay grade, especially for a school site. And they make 35, 788. That's gross, all right? That's not all the stuff that comes out. It's not all the benefit stuff that they have to pay or taxes. If that person came to our office today to take on broader responsibilities, we would put them at a 63 and they would have a pay increase of about $4,000. That's as it should be. Our central office folks aren't there. And so, because they've been frozen 13 years. And so, what we're asking in their scale is that it be one-half percent more than the, the equivalent assistant principal with the same number of years' experience. So, any, any questions about those last two? And then, my last slide, and then we'll answer any questions that you have. Okay, last slide. This is a, this is all of them where we can pay for it, all right? So, those of you, again, who've been on finance committee, you know, fund one is state, O2 is local, three is federal, five is child nutrition, eight is usually some special grant, that fund column. So, if we look at the employees groups, and we'll go through the program numbers that we can pay from state funds. Central office admin, O2, O2 is central office admin. We think we can pay out of state funds, 29, 738. And again, that changes if we lose an experienced admin person and get a lower one in or vice versa. But that's, that's looking at the people we have right now. State O3 is school-level, non-clerical, excuse me, non-certified clerical and custodians. So, that's clerical and custodians at the school level. We think we can pay for that, $41,000 out of state, 41, 8. PRC O14, that's CTE clerical. It's the clerical people that help with vocational career technical education, little over $1,000. O27 is state TAs. So, we think we can pay for their proposed placement on the step with the initial step increase from state O27. O32 is EC, non-certified, people who work in the EC program who are non-certified people, 11,530 from state. O56 is transportation, the office and the mechanics. Office and mechanics, 9, 100, 9,154. The next line's also O56. We didn't get it typed in there. But it's the drivers. It's the, the bus drivers. We think that 23, O59 will cover the increases for the driver from state funds. 63 is ECTA and shadow types, excuse me, little over $5,000. O69, those of you who've been on finance, you know, that's our at-risk money. We do lots of things with that. That's like an at-risk TA, a shadow kind of person. And then, local current expense, that's all non-certified and any other admins not covered in state. That's 122,900 that would come out of local. We can do, we can do that, folks. And then, from federal, we have 50 is Title I. You see the number there, 9,500. O60 is EC, Title VI, it's a federal grant, 7,200. PRC 110 is a 21st Century Grant. PRC 114 is another EC. I've lost that one. It's a nurse that we have to hire for particular students. Thank you for helping me remember that. I studied a lot and I tried to, I didn't remember everything. From child nutrition, O35, 2,300 there for the office and staff, 13, little over 13,000 for the managers, and 31,6 for all the other child nutrition employees. And then, special grants that we have, most of these are long-term, pretty stable grants. O12 is driver's ed. 314 is W, the big WIOA grant. We have five or six employees there that do our dropout recovery. And then, 413 is NC pre-K, folks who are non-certified, non-licensed who would work in that program, not the teachers, but DAs and like folks. So, the big picture total is about 350,500. That's, we can do that. Angie and I have been very conservative. And we think, you know, less than half of that, way less than half of that, comes out of, out of local current expense.
What is that number that comes out from that?
And, and I would just employ, and we'll answer any questions you have about those other scales. They all look alike. They're, like I said, there are a couple where there's one employee, so it might look odd, but we can tell you which department that is or who that employee is.
You, uh, on that back page, you mentioned federal grant and other grant. Are those ongoing grants or?
The O8s are.
O60 and 110?
Let me look at those. 110 is 21st Century. Uh, that one does end, but you, you're, what you're looking at there is 200 bucks. So even if we maintain that position, which I don't think we'll maintain many of those with, uh, local funds, my plan, I've talked to the director of that program and my plan is to, um, I did give them another teacher in the projected teacher allotment because their numbers have grown as well as the early college. But, uh, our plan there would be to use other grant funds like WIOA. That's a pretty small number. And then, uh, 114, that's EC. We get, um, Angie, not Angie, Randy and Joan before her were, are both very good at if we have a unique, uh, child that enters the school system, very often you can, Mr. Rogers has been on finance before, he's nodding. We can often petition the state for additional support funds because we have, uh, a, a, a child with very significant disabilities. And, and we just really don't have anyone, there's a little dash there because we don't really have anyone in that spot right now that would cause us to put them on a different scale and give them an increase. But we, we did the math. Angie did most of it and I was telling her, "No, okay, maybe, make it back." Seen that commercial with the glasses? Better, faster, cheaper. You've seen that commercial until I was doing that kind of stuff. But we did the math. We tried to do universal li, ma, uh, math-like calculations on, uh, the formulas, in particular the like formulas. Yes, ma'am? Anything you want to add?
Just real quick, I, I know that y'all saw in your report where, um, SEC is recommending that we do a 30-step scale. So the math on that is they, they did that for a couple of other LEAs, um, that could afford that and they told us, and I don't know if I'm supposed to say this publicly or not, but they told us that it would call, we could estimate roughly, because we wanted to do the work ourselves, um, 10 to 12 percent. So the employee groups that we've talked about tonight, both the non, non-certified salaried and our hourly employees and administration, there's about 420 to 430 employees in those groups and their total, um, gross pay is just over 11 million dollars. So very quickly, if you just use that low end of 10 percent, you're over a million dollar and we've not even talked about adding the FICA and retirement. I mean, I, I, I don't want to speak for Dr. Nolte, we would have loved to have done, went completely with the recommendation, but it's not a one, it's not a one and done fix. It's once you do that, you're, you're building once, you know, when, have I said too much? Uh, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I got nauseated when they, we got that number. Here, the other philosophy here, and we, we had lots of conversations, but the other philosophy here is we want to fix this for our employees, uh, becau, because it impacts our students. If we have turnover and we're looking for bus drivers and we're looking for mechanics and we're looking for all kinds of people, it impacts our students because we have subs or we don't have people at all or we don't have people with the right licensure. Putting people on the right step and doing the initial increase, as you can see on that last slide, impacts a lot of budgets. And so we, while we're trying to fix this, we don't want to cripple all those program budget areas. So that's another reason we're suggesting what we're doing. And if we find that we have more funds, and, and I think we might, but it's one of the, I'm also very deliberate, those of you who remember how we, we did a, uh, an algebra one shift, a math one, and then I'm sort of made people wait to do English one and I'm in eighth grade. And then I'm not really, they've talked to me about earth and environmental and I'm like, "No, we want to make sure everything else works first, then we'll talk about adding the next thing." That's just sort of the way I think. So I, I think if we can do this or something very, very similar to it, then if we have additional funds, I really think we're better off addressing those through supplement increases that we control. That's, that's local money. We'll know if we have it or not from the commissioners. Um, and those, you know, those supplement increases could be based just upon years of experience or employee groups or licensure certification. So there it is. Any questions?
I think everybody's got a lot of information.
Oh, my. Yes. Any questions about any of those sheets?
So the 350 is to initiate this today or right now?
I would ask you to do that July 1, uh, if you would consider as a board approving that, uh, at your, um, June, um, May, June meeting, um.
So the, what's?
Sooner you do it, the less likely we are to lose people.
So it's 350 we're adding. What's the annual? Is it going to be 350?
Oh, no.
Plus 350 or is it going to be 350? Plus 10 percent?
The, uh, that money's always going to be there, but we're going, we, we will be looking just for the steps.
Right, it'll go up, that's what I'm.
We'll be looking for the steps. Do you remember that number?
So the first year, this first year to fix it, is it'll be the base 350,000 and adding nothing plus whatever the state gives if they give something.
And then, uh, starting in 1920, as Dr. Nolte said, we'll give the higher of the two. We'll give like a thousand dollars for a 12-month person is $83.34 a month. And so if that's what the state gives one year and that step increases only $5, which is, it is for many, many people, then obviously we're going to give them this, the state increase. Does that make sense?
We, we could give you an estimate. Our problem is, is we don't know what the state's going to do.
I was just trying to figure out if we're going to be able to keep up with it if we add 350.
Plus 10 percent.
Plus.
3 percent.
Whatever, that's what I'm saying. Is it a 3 percent a year or a?
It's.
10 percent would be really going, that'd be 35 a year, so it'd be.
Well, it won't be, it won't be 350,000 every year. This, this piece of.
Just puts them on the step.
Yeah, this will put them on the step and then actually if they go up a step, then obviously you've got to pay on that, but I mean, some of them will stay on that step. If you look at the steps that you've got, where's the piece of paper?
Oh, it's increasing the 350,000.
It, but it won't be every year. You won't pay 350,000 every year because some people will stay, let's say they're a 12-month, let's say a step 12. At step 12, they won't move to, they'll go to 13, but 13's the same amount.
But it'll still be 350 next year plus all the people who step up. So it'll be 360 and then it'll be 375 and then it'll be 380 and it'll be 390.
We can, we can calculate, we can calculate a number and email it to you or give it to you tomorrow.
No, that's fine, I'm just curious.
For the, for the minimum amount, but we don't know what the amount's going to be if the state does a larger amount. If the state does a larger amount, they usually give us that money for state employees. Uh, we're very comfortable, I am very comfortable and I wouldn't bring you anything, I'm very comfortable paying for this in the long term.
Right, I'm, I think it's fine.
You go right ahead.
You got to, you got to get it straightened out.
Mr. Clark? Would you like to come to the podium?
No. Oh, I need to speak.
Turn your mic off. Get your mic up.
Um, if you'll look at the, the, what's on the board right now, for example, um, someone that's on a step 13 right now, they've got 13, they've been with us 14 years and next year they're going to be with 15 years, to go from step 13 to step 14, that initial fix is going to be $85 for one, for this one year to fix them to, mainly what we're trying to do is get some delineation between those low steps. But the next year, so they went from 13 to 14, but let's say the next year in 1920, when they go from 14 to 15, if the state doesn't give us any money, they're, they're only getting $24 a month. Does that make sense? So it's not going to be 350,000 every year.
That's what I was saying. I mean, Ronnie's sitting here or Mr. Clark's sitting here saying it's going up by 10,000 every year. I mean, he's saying 350 this year, 360, 370, 380, that's not how I'm understanding the steps here.
That's correct.
The steps are you're doing the initial fix for 350,000, but then if somebody's going from a 17 to a 18, once they're on that step, that is only a 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, a $5 increase.
Well, it's actually a $30 increase, but it's not 80.
So you're saying this year we're going to give them a $5 raise and next year we're going to give them a $3 raise?
No, it's the steps, it's the steps.
I understand, but if you take, you add 350,000 to raise.
350.
Pay scale.
350 is in the budget.
Yes, it's a place.
And then next year it'll be 350 will be there and then whatever the step is, it's going to be more.
More.
Well, the right thing to do is just catch them up. I mean, for heaven's sakes, they've not had a raise in 13 years, so the whole thing makes a lot of sense.
We need to do it, but I just seen if it's the right thing to do. Term out was my question. Trying to find what's fine.
What's up with the $5?
I know, I know.
Here's, and, and I alluded to this early, that's probably at the very beginning or the very end of the pay scale. So the one that's up, that, stop changing them, Angie.
You work that one?
You, yeah, you'll confuse me. But what happens if, if we, let's say we put $30 or.
Good job, you're getting $5 extra dollars.
Let's say, here's the problem, and if we had, you know, 1.5 million dollars to put on this, then maybe we could put $30 on each scale. But if we put $30, um, in all of those places where it has five, when we get down to step 15, it's $30 times each of those lines, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
It's pretty spacy there.
Then, and that is, uh, money that we probably do not have. And so what we had to do was take the range of funds within the frozen group. That's right.
And, well Bobby, what I'm, I'm.
We can't pay for 15 and above if we give all the, the first 15. And this, we didn't create this problem, the state did.
Well, if I'm hearing Dr. Nolte correctly, he told us early on, they'd done some, a bunch of different scales and he figured out this one was a Cadillac and he had to get down in something more like he drove, that's what he's telling us.
Yeah. How many'd you take back, Angie?
That's why I want you to see it because you're the only one that didn't see it.
Never mind. This is a.
It's wearing a Buick.
It's an American-made car that'll run a long time.
Dr. Rogers, the other, the other thing, if you'll look at step two, on the current year, if you'll look at step two to step 14, you, we've only got, we're building from a base of, we've got $20 in an 11-step span. And I, I get, I see the $5 and, and I hate, I hate that. If you, the interesting thing though, if you look in the, uh, y'all have the paper copies, you see where it starts about 16, year 16? That is the old scale. Years ago, and I, and I wish I could pull them up, zero, we had zero to 32 steps on every group that we've talked about tonight and every group that's in front of you, and that's the old scale. And so what's happened, you can see where all that was frozen. Does that make sense?
Yep.
The other question I have is, um, a little less sarcastic. What are you going to do with this info? Are you going to share this with county commissioners in particular, the fact?
Page 13.
The ability is.
Well, we, we, we do record our work sessions. Yes, sir.
When our, when our. Ability is 25th in the state.
Well, we.
We're ranked 65th.
We, 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 we talked to.
And we know the money's coming in. We don't know where it's going, but we know where it ain't going.
Right. Well, we talked, we talked to Ricky about, about that discrepancy. Some of that may be real dollars. The thing that, uh, leads me to believe that it's not all real dollars is that it's pretty universal, that discrepancy is pretty universal in the mountains. And I think that has, uh, more to do with what the property taxes look like and, and how that's, how that is actually collected. Uh, but I think what we can do is use this as one of the, uh, talking and negotiation points as we renegotiate, you said it, Mr. Rogers, as we renegotiate our formula, which is what we would be doing in 18, 19. It, it's, it is an important point.
I don't know that that 65 is a number that could be used to, um, when I asked the question, he was very careful how he answered it, is that property tax value in the mountains and the, and, and the property tax rate? So there's some, there's some numbers in there that may not correlate exactly to that 65 and I.
That's right. I think.
But if it doesn't correlate for us, it doesn't correlate for other counties.
No, no, I know. And it's, it's all relative and, and the other thing I would like to say is just that, you know, they, the county commission, we identified the issue and we took it to county commission. This, they asked us to do this study, best I recall. And we've done the study, now we know the results, now we need to share those results with those guys and, and, uh, in a professional manner and, and, uh, talk to them about, you know, what our proposal are, is to try to fix that and we're going to do it as best we can with what we've already got. And if y'all want to sweeten it up some, uh, we can do more.
Yeah, I, I think we, uh, again, I defer always to the board, but I think we do what, what's right and what we can do. And we can afford this or, or, I wouldn't have brought it, Angie wouldn't have let me bring it, I don't think.
My thing is.
And then I think we go back to them and say, "We'd like to do more in lots of areas."
Before we go, I want to, go ahead Chuck, but.
Go ahead. Two more topics.
Page 34, it's comparing the Haywood County government to the Haywood County schools. When we had our meeting in here, one of the things they brought up was paying the teachers more versus paying their people more. But according to this, a lot of their people's making a lot more money.
Remember that point.
And we need, if, if, if they're all basically government employees, they should be on the same scale, to me. I think that's another point. I want to tell them, no, I'm not questioning this, but I just want to make sure we can pay for it and Angie will tell you. I come to Dr. Garrett and her, the first budget that I had posted note and highlighted, I would cut everything in our budget to pay y'all more money. And I said that from the beginning, from, if we need, if you need two widgets, don't order four, just to get the money next year. Let's take all that money and give to y'all. That's the way I believe 100 percent. I just want to make sure we can do it because if I'm voted out, I don't want to be remembered as the guy who screwed the county for the next 20 years on the pay scale. I have to live with a thousand people in the mill that just does not let you forget anything, so.
Yeah, I, don't.
Don't think that they don't have every piece of newspaper and like, "Well, what is this?"
But we, we can, we can pay for it.
Waiting on the door, so.
We, we can pay for it.
Okay.
I don't mind saying that. We would not have brought it if we could not. Thank you.
But I appreciate all this hard work.
That's a lot of work.
Thank you. We have two other short topics.
Yeah.
Please.
So in February, um, we came to you with a different weather plan moving forward because we were missing so much for snow. And I just wanted to, um, I think it's in your packet, but this is what we had going forward back in February. And if you notice that you, uh, you approved that you would waive up to a total of four days for students for this current school year that we're in. And to date, you have waived two of those. So I am asking you to consider, um, right now, right now, students and employees end on June 14, June 15th. And that leaves no workdays then for any teachers or, um, those employees. So I'm asking if you would consider using one of those waived days that you approved in February to waive for students only June 15th, making that, uh, that students end on June 14th and making the 15th a mandatory teacher workday. and making the 15 a mandatory teacher workday.
We, we, we met with all the principals and talked to them about that, and their folks will have to come back off contract and finish, finish their work after the testing. So, uh, we feel that, that that's an appropriate request to make.
And how, how does everybody feel about that?
I, 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 I met at, at length with our principals and, uh, asked them about that. They were, uh, there were two that asked questions. Uh, everyone else was, yes, yes, let's do it. And I asked them to get back with me, uh, in a week, and that was well over a week ago, uh, if, if they did not want to do it. And the two that asked questions, uh, I said, well, do you want to do it or not? I know that you may have to move testing one day, or change your end-of-year awards program, those kinds of things. Do, do, and I asked them to go back and talk to some of their teacher leaders, certainly not all of them, because we didn't want the decision to get way ahead of you. You know, we just, we wanted to talk to a few and then make a recommendation to you. And both of those said, well, yeah, we want to do it, it's just going to be some work. And I said, okay, we'll, we'll ask the board.
And as far as the teachers go, um, you would probably, if you went to school on the following Monday, see teachers working in their classroom off their contract because of not being able to get everything done.
Anything else? All right. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.